Live broadcasts are available only in Redding due to technology constraints. But the meeting was videotaped for distribution to television stations in North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discussion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments be directed to the Chair and that all parties act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Some introductions. First, we'd like to introduce the new CAD member from North Redding, Mark Chrysos.
Hello.
Hello, Mark. Welcome to the Board. Thank you for your service. And also, jumping ahead a bit, we have a new Commissioner, Dave Hennessy. After many months of waiting, we finally got it done. Thanks, Dave, for stepping up and...
Welcome, Board.
Thank you very much. And so is there anybody -- is this about the -- if anybody in attendance has any comments? Would that be from Mark or from anybody else? Public comment? No? Anybody else wishing to be acknowledged? Okay. John will be -- Stempac will be Board Secretary. Is that okay, John?
Very good. Thank you.
Dave, we've introduced you. And now we have minutes to approve. The October 2 minutes.
Will the October 2, 2014 minutes be accepted as presented?
Second.
All in favor? And that is a 5-0 vote. Next time, Dave, right hand.
Chadda says right hand.
Chadda says right hand for some reason. Best digital to puritan days. I think the left hand belongs to the devil.
That and him means her, and her means him.
Exactly. The motion carried 5-0-0. General Manager's report.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I want to start off with just a little feedback from some of our storms. The new nickname is Snowpocalypse, as I heard what we're having here. We had back-to-back storms for a while, and we actually had really no outages. We had -- the team was ready to go in anticipation of it turning wet and getting heavy, but we managed to get through the majority of those first storms without any outages whatsoever. So I wanted to thank staff for being ready to go. This most recent storm, though, as the ice dams started and the icicles started, we did get several of the ice dams, icicles breaking off and breaking SE cables and meters off of the house. So we've had some of those occurring. And I know this isn't electrical, but I would like to remind the folks out there that if you have natural gas, there's vents on your gas meter, you should make sure that you dig them out. If you have septic, you have methane discharge pipes, you should shovel those out. You know, gas dryers, electric dryers. You know, sometimes when you're having problems with your house, you're not thinking about all these things that could be backfeeding into the house. And we've actually dug some things out here where there was some gas fumes over in the line operations area.
I think the regulation for the gas from your furnace, if you have a gas furnace, is something like three feet. And it has to be, when it comes out the wall, it has to be at least three feet off the ground. Unfortunately, the snow is about six feet. So you have to dig it out.
The bathroom vents that are on your roof, a lot of those are blocked in as well. So it's vent check time. Okay. Items B through F. I'm going to start the presentation, and then I'm going to ask Tom Olilla, who's one of our pretty recent hires. He's an Integrated Resource Engineer for the Integrated Resources Division. And he's going to talk about our new demand response program in tangent. And I apologize to Mark Chrysos because he heard a little bit of this at the CAD meeting. But we promise it won't be completely redundant. And then Bill Selden will step in for Jane, who's on vacation, and handle the competitive electricity topics. And then Hameed Jafarian, Director of Engineering and Operations, will handle that section of it. And in that, we will target C, D, E, and then we'll wrap it up with F, if that's okay with everyone. Okay? You insist I have a pointer?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I'll stand over here. Not over here, over here. So can you back up one just for a second? I'm sorry. So the reason why we titled this is that there was a 2008 strategic plan. In a strategic plan, when we start to do the organizational study and the reliability study, almost becomes a chicken and an egg. It's like you start off with a reliability study, we'll look at the organizational reliability results and recommendations, and then we'll revise the strategic plan, and then we'll lay out the 20-year plan and the goals. Okay? So this is really what we've been doing in-house in how we're laying out. We're not waiting for the consultant to come in. We have to work every day to move forward. The consultant is reviewing some of the stuff that we're putting together, along with other things that they're evaluating for their recommendations. So I just want to bring attention to the strategic plan from 2008. I'm sure a lot of people in here have read it, but if you're new and you haven't seen it, we can have Jeannie send you a copy. Okay. The mission statement is, "RMLD is committed to providing excellent customer service, including competitively priced electricity as a result of diligence in the areas of power supply risk management, system reliability and flexibility, as well as overall business efficiency." Next. Okay. So -- and we recently had a company-wide staff meeting, so I wanted to remind everyone that these are the four bullets in the 2008 strategic plan. So when I came onboard, essentially, one and a half -- the first bullet and half of the second bullet was being worked on diligently. Okay? So when I come in, I assess that, and we started working on the second half of Bullet Two and Bullets Three and Four. So this is what we've been focusing on. This is why we move ahead, even though the organizational reliability study is working in parallel. Provide customers with a product mix that optimizes electric costs and maximizes value through energy efficiency and load management. Procure a long-term, diverse, and environmentally responsive power supply portfolio, including consideration of ownership of generation. Assure long-term reliability of the RMLD distribution system and enhance customer service to residential and commercial customers to the highest level. So now we take this, and we're going to talk a little bit about how have we been doing that for the last year and a half? So if we go to the next slide, you remember when we sent out the annual reports, we started going paperless. So everything was done digital format. And our mottos, not to be confused with our mission statement, was be efficient, get greener, and go paperless. So what have we been doing, and how do they fit into those categories? And if you look under each one of them, I can't really read them from here, but up in efficiency, I'll give you a few examples. The residential hot water program, the time of use rate, Energy Star rebate program, reliability efficiency, career development programs and training, the operating standards, the safety committee, construction standards, organizational reliability studies that we call for, distribution and substation maintenance programs, the SharePoint communication system, creating the new tech services group, and the new apprentice line worker group, and the working groups. So those all fit into the category is, let's get efficient, let's get greener, preserve the environment through non-polluting and energy-saving measures. What have we done there? The LED streetlight program, increasing renewable power supply portfolios, solar partnerships, peak demand reduction program that Tom will talk about, transformer load management and substation maintenance program. Go paperless. Let's move towards wireless data for improved communications internally with our customers and within the electric system. The enhanced fiber network for the SCADA system, the distribution system, the new 500 Club AMI system that Hameed will talk about in a few minutes, the responsive communication plan, the SharePoint paperless billing, online payments, and your iPads in front of you so that we're not putting together these big, huge books every month. So this is how those mottos tied in. Next. Okay. Here's a list of more as we're meeting the goals and the objectives. I'll just let you read them. What I'm going to do is pick a couple of them in which Tom and Hameed are going to go over in particular. You want to go to the next slide? And there is a couple more. And you know, going to a six-year capital and expense budgets, unbundling the bills and the rates, you're all familiar with a lot of the things that we have accomplished. And I just want you to see how those fit into the existing strategic plan. Okay. So next, we're going to talk about the technology roadmap and how we're going to make the system smarter so that it communicates with the transmission systems that we connect with, and smarter so that we can, if we get into a situation where we have an outage, we want to get the power back as soon as possible, so we're selling kilowatts again. We want to get right back the power to everyone. This is the 20-year plan. We're going to create a smarter system technology roadmap. We're going to develop and implement the GIS plan. We're going to install AMI and a mesh network. Hameed's going to talk about that a little bit more. Everyone familiar here that we have a fixed network AMR system, not an AMI system? So we held off on the 500 Club larger customers, and we're going to an AMI system. We're going to integrate it on top of the fixed network. And then put AMIs here and there where we need that two-way communication, but I'll let Hameed go into that a little bit more. Evaluate and implementation of distribution generation. Develop cybersecurity system for RMLD's technology, which is a requirement, and maintaining reliability. So these are some of the topics that I'm going to let my staff go over in some great detail. Is there any questions so far? Okay, great. Next slide. Turning it over to Bill Selden to start talking about competitive electricity.
The data acqui -- is that data acquisition? Is that what the DA stands for in the MI? Good, thank you.
Okay. I'll be brief because Colleen touched on most of this already with the first two bullets. But just to get a little specific on some of the efficiency programs that we're working on, for the residential customers, we currently offer renewable energy rebates and appliance rebates. We're becoming a lot more actively involved with solar projects with our residential customers. We have roughly 30 so far installed on the service territory. On the commercial side, we have the Commercial Energy Initiative, which the efficiency engineers, Tom and Tears, are working diligently on with a lot of our commercial customers, as well as a lot of lighting rebates. And I'd be -- we -- anybody in our department would be happy to talk in greater detail on any of those types of programs that are currently going on. You just hit the -- Tom's going to hit on distributive generation a little bit, as well as Hameed is. We offer a myriad of rate options to residential and commercial customers to cover efficiency. The Controlled Hot Water Heater Project, which is in transition right now. We're trying to get all of our hot water heaters up under one uniform type of technology. We have a time of use rate, not only for residential customers, but also for the industrial and commercial customers, and we offer interruptible rates. For demand response, again, Tom's going to really touch a lot on what he's doing with the peak demand reduction program on the next few slides. Again, probably the other thing to highlight is the economic development that we would like to push more of. Instead of having a lot of people talk about revenue erosion because of efficiency that's going on, we're trying to meet the challenge by offering technology that will help sell kilowatt-hours, like the electric charging stations, which Tears has been working on. We applied for a grant. We got a grant and installed some units already at some commercial and industrial customer bases, and we're hoping to grow that, as well as some more work with sequentric systems, which are wireless and we're using right now for the hot water heater program. But we can hopefully expand that into other avenues. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Hello, everybody?
Hi, Tom.
As you know, utility studies have consistently ranked RMLD rates as some of the lowest in the state. And our challenge as managers of the organization is to continue that tradition. One of the ways we do that is by working with our largest customers to mitigate the effects of cost pressures that affect all of us. Since 2008, we've had several commercial energy efficiency programs, which incentivize upgrading equipment to today's higher efficiency standards. And last year, we added a new program aimed at reducing the peak demand of our largest commercial and municipal customers. And that's what I'd like to really focus on tonight, just to give you an overview of how that program works. So if you go ahead to the next slide, please. For some time, we've been seeing increasing fees for capacity and transmission charges. And almost all of the utility market forecasts indicate that those will continue to rise in the near future. And you can see from this chart that, as a percentage of our overall wholesale costs, those two items are becoming a much bigger piece of the pie. So that's really the goal of the peak demand reduction program, is to help mitigate those increases. It hasn't hit us full force yet, but we know it's coming. So we're putting the things in place to help us and our customers deal with that.
Tom, just a question. I know you're in the middle of this, but we have a new Commissioner, and maybe people in the public don't know what a capacity charge or a transmission charge is. So we do, and you do. But if anybody's watching, maybe just explain what those two things are.
Sure, sure. Our wholesale power costs are broken down into several buckets, if you will. With the deregulation of the industry several years ago, the industry was divided up into certain segments. There was the power plants that most people think of, you know, Seabrook or the coal-generating plant. That's the easiest to identify. So it's sort of three phases. The power plants, the transmission lines that take the power from the power plants to get them to the major distribution points, and then the last leg is the distribution side. And RMLD is in the distribution segment. So we all up the power that we sell to our customers, we have to buy from the power plants and the transmission owners that get the power to us. So the so-called capacity costs are tied to the building of the power plants themselves. So those are long-term, very highly capital-intensive investments. So it really has to be thought out ahead of time, and you're sort of accruing money to pay for those well in advance. And the same thing goes on the transmission side. That's to cover the cost of the copper, the infrastructure, to get the high-voltage power from the power plants to the distribution centers. So those two items are really tied to the infrastructure of the plants and the wires, the feeding mechanisms that gets the power to us.
Just a quick -- may I ask a quick question? The capacity is a function of our peak day on a given month or over the year, right?
Correct.
So that the very highest day of usage is that green piece, the green chunk there?
Yes.
So if it's really just a single day of the whole year?
It's actually a single hour.
A single hour of the whole year is what results in that giant green thing?
That's the way that the industry is structured, that the rates people pay for to cover those capacity is determined by that one hour of the year when the entire system, all of ISO New England, is maxed out. Because that's what you have to plan for. From an engineering and a systems point of view, it's a horrible way to run a piece of equipment, is size it for the worst case, and then most of the year, it's running at 40% or 30% of capacity. But the way electricity works, you have to be able to supply the demand at that worst-case condition.
And is that capacity cost our capacity in RMLD, or is that our portion of the...
Well, everybody who takes load has to pay a portion of that. So that's why you could think of it that ISO New England, at that peak hour, takes a snapshot of how much power all of the different users are using. And then that piece of the pie, that determines your piece of the pie for the next capacity year.
So I just thought we'd do that for Dave and anybody else who might be watching. That's why he's doing this, because if we can knock that one hour every month, and it's certainly the one in July that's the worst of the year, there's a huge payoff, a huge six-figure payoff.
Because then we have a smaller piece of the pie of this overall cost that will charge us.
Exactly.
Right. Because we're not a profit-making entity, but all of the costs that we incur, we have to pass along to all of our customers. So what we're doing is looking to mitigate that, at least for those two items, for those capacity charges. And yeah, I'd be glad, you know, at another time to answer more detailed questions with you, or set up a special section later to go through that in more detail, because it's...
Just wanted to hammer home why what you're doing is so important, which it is.
Sure, absolutely. So those two items are becoming a larger and larger piece of the pie. So what we've done is set up a new program, what we call our Peak Demand Reduction Program, to really address that. So RMLD's PDR program offers our commercial and municipal customers an opportunity to reduce their costs by adjusting their demand during a relatively few number of hours during the year. And the customer can do that one of two ways. They can shed load by turning off equipment or adjusting set points, or they can run onsite generators. In either case, the amount of power they're drawing from our system is reduced. And that's really the goal of the overall system, is when ISO New England's taking that picture, we want our load to be as low as possible. Once they finish taking the picture, we can go back up. It's all right. So that, again, that's really the goal, to reduce our power during that. I mean, the summer one is the easiest one to identify, because it's that, you know, really hot day in July or August when everyone's got their air conditioners cranked up. But on the transmission side, the transmission peaks are determined the same way, that max period, but that one is each month. So every month of the calendar year, there's a transmission peak. And our transmission charges, our fees, are done the same way. So those peaks are a little more difficult to forecast because they're, you know, not that obvious. So those are the two ways the customer can reduce the amount they take, shed load or run local generators. And participation in the program is 100% voluntary. So if the customer decides to opt out of the program entirely or just for certain events, there's no penalty associated with it. So it's really in the customer's favor. And the economic benefit that the customer can accrue is identified in the -- if you go to the next slide. This table shows -- one more. So the table summarizes the economic bottom-line benefit to the customer. For every megawatt of load that they shed, equates to a total savings of $60,000 for that customer over the calendar year of the program. So it's a significant savings for them. So it's -- and to achieve that, it's really only a few hours a month that they have to participate. So the key is to working with the customers, to educate them on the value of this, and enable them to put the equipment and/or processes in place to allow them to do this. Some of it's communication gear, getting them the information on what their loads are, or tying into automated systems that adjust their air conditioners during those hours. And that's really what we've been doing over the past six months to a year, is the educational side, introducing the program. We're running workshops here. We had one a few weeks ago where we had customers come in and spent a couple hours training them. We're doing a lot of onsite visits, energy audits, to work with them to figure out, depending on the type of company it is, they would have different loads, which is important to them. Whether you're in an office building, it's more on the HVAC, air conditioner side. If it's a factory, maybe there's certain equipment that they could look at, et cetera. So that's where we're at now, is really educating the customers and enabling them to participate in the program. Because the more they benefit, the more we benefit.
Has the response been good in that?
Yeah, the response has been good. We have on the order of 10 to 12 of our larger -- and right now, this is only a pilot project for our largest customers, the so-called 500 Club.
Right.
So we're focused on them right now. But our goal for long term is to expand this to all customers, as well as there's projects on the residential side that could contribute to this as well. Primarily things like the hot water heater program. That could be tied into a demand reduction approach. But this is, you know, what our -- sort of the low-hanging fruit that we've been going after. They have really big chunks of power. It's, you know, a megawatt or two at a time. So yeah, the response has been good. We have 10 or 12 signed up officially, and another 10 to 20 that we're in the process of connecting. So that's the -- the potential payoff is up to $60,000 apiece. And the next slide, if you want to go ahead? So this is something that we would use to evaluate specific customers, again, depending on the category, if it's an office building, or a retail, or a factory. Go ahead, Bill. This, you can't see very well, but another big piece of the implementation side is setting up a web portal to all of the customers in the program, so they can have a live picture of what their load is. So at a given hour or during the day, they can see what their load profile is. And it also has automated tools that calculate what the effect was of any load shedding action that they take. So after we call an event, the next day, they can say, oh, I ended up saving 200 kilowatts, and that translates into X number of savings. And then I think the next couple of slides are, you know, similar screenshots of the web-enabled tools that we provide at no cost to the customer for signing up.
Tom?
So we are -- the significance of the 500, is that -- what does that designate?
I think that's a good question. I think at one time, it was 500 kilowatt-hours or...
We did a study several years ago where we tried to define what our largest customers were, and what the cutoff point was 500 kilowatts. So the 500 Club is anybody that's 500 kilowatt or greater.
500 kilowatt peak or 500,000 kilowatt-hours?
No, 500 kilowatt.
Okay. Yeah. Essentially, it's our top 50 customers right now is the 500 Club. So it's a little -- so that's a lot of my focus on the support side, is working with those larger commercial customers to do this, as well as the ongoing day-to-day projects or issues that they have.
You know, they distribute it pretty evenly across the service towns, or they work...
It's primarily Wilmington and North Redding is the bulk of the larger users. There's certain areas. Analog is by far our biggest customer, and that industrial park over there. And then there's the River Park area in North Redding and Ballard Vale in Wilmington. Those are the three main centers of where these places are. Those are the three main centers of where these places are. Any other questions?
What about municipalities and their buildings? Do they get a chance to have this?
Yeah, good, good point. They are included in this and I've talked with representatives from all the towns. In fact, George and Dennis from Wilmington have looked at that. They've been preoccupied with building a school, some little project they have going. But, but all of the municipal facilities people I've talked to and at least made them aware of the program and we're still rolling that out because they're, you know, they have some pretty high peaks at some of the school buildings that, that could benefit from it. So there's interest and they're certainly eligible to participate.
Has the town of Reading or its schools responded to say that they would like to get these savings? I'm just curious.
Yes, I'm working with Kelly at, at the Reading High School and they're, she's relatively new in that job, so it's, she's still evaluating existing programs and, but this will definitely be a piece of, you know, what she rolls out going forward. They had signed up for some energy efficiency programs, pay-for-performance type contracts that are in process. So how this fits into that is, is one of the issues they're struggling with.
Is the town of Reading one of the 50? One of the 500 Club?
Well, 500, at least the definition I've been using is the commercial side and then the municipals are another piece of that, but they're both eligible for this program.
How much could, just to persist, how much could the town of Reading say, save if they did this and figured it out?
Reading, some of their buildings were peaking, I think, 200 or 400. So it could be 25, $50,000 if they, you know, hit all of those.
That's schools or town or both?
That's total for the, for the whole town.
Okay, so the town of Reading has an opportunity to save 50 grand. That's an interesting data point.
It could easily be tens of thousands of dollars. So the, a major push for us now is just educating them and enabling them, showing them what they would have to do. Because, I mean, it's, it's a relatively small amount of effort, but it's still effort. It's something, someone thing has to do and facilities guys have had other white stuff-related issues over the last month or so.
For sure. Well, that's good to know.
All right, yeah, and for follow-up, I'd be glad to answer any more detailed questions later.
The 500 Club that we're focusing on now, the end of the pilot where we would become a little bit more aggressive with the next level is when?
Well, it is tied into the, the metering program, so it's going to be dovetailed with that because in order for us to implement this program, we need to monitor what their usage is. So they have to have the meters capable of recording and, you know, being the feedback loop for that and how you do it. And then there's other issues like integrating the results into the billing system and crediting them that. So, so those are the, the logistics that we have to sort through, but it's, it's all certainly doable and, and worth doing because it's a good chunk of money.
Maybe this is something that, if I may suggest that the cab could go back to your, if they don't, if they're not already doing it, you know, you could be a liaison back to your town to explain to them that they have this savings opportunity and same, you could at your next cab meeting, let the other ones know that they too could ring the doorbell at town hall.
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you.
One last, if I may?
Sure.
Last question. How many of the, of the companies you're working with have these distributed generation capabilities? Turn on, basically they look like diesel generators that they can turn on?
There's probably 20 or 30 that have a generator quote, but a lot of them are fairly small and don't really do anything more than some emergency lights and stuff. The, the ones that have substantial generators is just three or four. Charles River Labs has some very large, I think they're up to three or four megawatts of generators because of the nature of their business, you know, they have to keep their animals alive. So we're working with them to install some additional emissions equipment to allow those generators to be run in non-emergency because this is, they're, most of those generators were only permitted to run under emergency conditions, you know, extreme outage.
Interesting.
So you can't run them for economic reasons, which is what this would be unless they're re-permitted. So we're working through those issues with them to get them re-permitted and/or adding additional emissions equipment so they can run them without violating any EPA guidelines, et cetera.
Yeah, I would think Analog would also have a very large one.
Yeah, Analog, we've been spending a lot of time with them, looking at putting in some additional generation and these would all be primarily customer-funded, you know, so if they invest the money in putting a generator there, that enables them to participate in the program.
And most of the large ones have to be turned on at least once a year, right? I mean, just to make sure that they work.
Well, really they, they should go on once a week or once a month.
Is that right?
Just for maintenance testing.
Yep.
In fact, we have one in the, here on campus that they, every Wednesday morning they run that.
Oh, so we're generator?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
Primarily gas-fired or?
Oil.
Primarily, but there, there's a fair amount of diesel. All of the Charles River guys are diesel generators. But, but even those, those can be outfitted with enough gear that it, it meets all the EPA requirements.
I do, go ahead, Tom, sorry.
I just had a question for Colleen. At the beginning of the presentation, so there's a 2008 strategic plan. Is, is there a process or how often, every company does it differently and most of the goals are probably evergreen in terms of how they're laid out, but does that get redone every five or 10 or seven years or what's kind of the process? And then how often does it get revisited? Because some things won't change over the course of other things made.
Right. The recommendation is usually between three to five years that you're evaluating your strategic plan and making sure that it's, it's in line with the most current technology and the business plan and whether or not the economics have changed, so.
So it's possible with the new studies that are in process that we may revisit it, post the studies to?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the preliminary from the studies and discuss the recommendations. We'll address revising the strategic plan and then we'll lay out the, the long-term 20-year plan for both the system and the, and the organization.
Okay. Thank you. I do have, unless anybody else does, I have another question for Tom. So the numbers look, just to a hundred-informed person, high, like somebody could get $60,000 back from RMLD just for turning off things. Where do those numbers come from? Like $3.50 for a kilowatt hour when normally they're paying a dime or?
It's ra, it's, it's based on the, the savings that we achieve on our capacity charges. So we're essentially sharing the total savings that the system gets with the customer. So if, if a customer like the example saved 60,000, we're, our overall system is saving that as well. So our capacity charges are that.
They're getting half, they're getting half, is that it?
Every month, we, we, Jane gets a bill from ISO. These are your transmission fees and these are your capacity fees. So it's all based on those numbers.
So, I get it. So, so we're giving them half back that we?
It's not that, no, they're not issuing checks. It's not that you're going to get a refund.
Right.
Overall, the capacity and transmission charges, they're going to be reduced to a total amount that you're going to have to pay ISO.
Right, I understand.
So that way we save and then the customer?
I understand. I understand that we're not writing them checks. I understand that their bills are going down and that we're saving more than we're getting, we're reducing there. I understand. So, but it's about half, is that it?
Roughly half, yeah.
Who, I mean, these are, these are rates, so, but who set those rates? Isn't that our job, the board?
This is a, this is just a pilot program.
Okay.
Right, and those can be adjusted every year like, you know, any other program. So, but, but that's where they came from. They were based on the ISO capacity rates.
Okay, I'm just, I guess normally the board, I just want to know where the rates come from and do we get a chance to set rates on what we're giving back to people?
Another example is the rebates. We were writing rebate checks to customers for lowering their peak usage and that's all based on, you know, how much savings the system sees. So, you know, it's just another program that benefits the system.
I know what you're asking, but it's not system-wide. These are, as you mentioned, pilot programs and then if it grows out of a pilot program to be substantial, then that would probably trigger a, let's think of rethink the rates and what they ought to be. I mean, if you can reduce the overall peak and whatnot. I mean, everything's going the right way. It's a positive spiral.
Yeah, no, no doubt, no doubt. I just was curious where the rates come from, that's all. And who sets them?
There are also competitive companies out there that just because you're franchise, like EnerNOC, that can come in and do the same type of thing.
Right.
So we want them to come to us because with the EnerNOC.
No doubt.
We're not getting the reduction in the peak. We still have to pay.
I see.
The peak price because that virtual generation that they're creating by turning on their generator is, is worth the money.
I understand. No, I, I get that it's worth it. It's great stuff. I'm just, I'm only getting down to the level of rate setting on, when we're giving people back a certain rate, like where that number comes from and when does the board look at that?
The specific rate that we're basing the credit off of is a FERC file brief.
Okay.
So we have no, we don't set those rates. Those rates are dictated to us as to what we're going to pay.
The dollar 50 and the 350?
Yes.
The dollar 50 and the 350 are set by FERC?
Yes.
And that's nothing we have anything?
It's actually twice that.
Okay.
That's just a calculated credit off of a FERC file brief.
Okay, well, it's all.
More complicated than we thought.
Yeah. All right, well, it's, it's great stuff. Is, do we have the, last question I have is, do we have the technical capacity at this time for, if we wanted to expand it to a larger segment of people, than an average homeowner, okay, they're not going to get 60 grand off their bill, but maybe they'll get 60 bucks off their annual bill. They'll get $5 a month or $10 a month for turning off the AC at 3 o'clock.
Well, right now we're working with the 500 Club because that was that line.
I know.
The new meters that we went to.
Right.
With a two-way communication. So as those meters are coming in, do we have them all in yet?
Well, no. They, they, or?
They're ordered, they're coming in and as we start to implement them into the 500 Club or whoever wants to participate in, in that group. And then, you know, we, we have to talk more about how many of these meters we want, we want to buy because you, you had an investment of an AMR system that we don't want to eliminate, but that.
Gotcha.
Two-way communication is where we need to target. So that, the next level of people that we address will be probably the next level of usage and, and look at the cost to us and then maybe what we give back to the customer if we have to put more capital into it to changing our meters that are already existing.
Yeah, on, on the residential side, the hot, the electric hot water heaters is probably the low-hanging fruit that you go at.
Right.
And we started a pilot program with those and we have 200 or so in the field now. We could expand that and do a, you know, a more aggressive peak demand program with that to, you know, each individual house is not a whole lot, but when you add them all together, you know, it gets substantial. And the good thing about those is the homeowner is really not actively involved, so we're, we're controlling their hot water heater so it won't go on in the afternoon.
Right, right.
So it's, it's much easier to implement than calling up the facilities manager at Analog and say, hey, shut that machine off.
Right, cold showers in the afternoon.
It's more automated. Without, without cold showers, we're not affecting comfort or, or performance at all, believe me.
Dave, you might be mentioning like a home area network where you're on a time of use rate and you have this box in your house that we're sending you a message that says it's a peak and the resident lowers their peak usage during that hour. Then certainly we can come up with a program to incentivize them as well.
Right.
It's just getting that two-way communication to the home area network and how many people would be interested in that and how many meters we'd have to change.
Right, understood. Well, top level, it's all great stuff. I mean, it's long overdue that the department is, is doing this stuff. It's obviously a huge payback for the rate payer, you know, at the high, at the high level. It would be, is this the end of the presentation?
Yes.
I keep interrupting, I'm sorry.
Well, it's the end of Tom's.
So I guess, is, is there some simple? Is there, is there a bottom line on this that we expect it's going to cost X in terms of the give-backs, but we're going to get Y back? You know, what are those two numbers? It'd be good to see that at some point, just so that we know, you know, we're giving these amounts back, but we're seeing this larger savings as you progress, to just get that summary.
We can put together charts of what the peaks are.
But, but in.
As Tom said, capacity transmission is going to be going up significantly, so.
Understood. But just some projections and just so we know how, we can get a sense and so can the public about how much the department is saving rate payers and saving, you know, and, and improving our business through these efforts would be great to see just some summaries and projections down the road.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent stuff. Yep.
Proposed distributed generation installation. We're proposing approximately 20 megawatts over the next 10, 20 years for as distributed generation project. These are the type, these are the mini generators that doesn't require that heavy permitting like the emergency or backup generators and we can run them for number of hours, like 600 to 1,000 hours during the peak, which is going to actually, it's a peak shaving unit that, as you saw in the previous slide, the, those two sections for the, the transmission and capacity. So these units are being used basically as peak shaving during the peak so you could get credits for capacity and transmission and these are great. This is where the industry trend is moving toward. Basically, the benefits are the demand response peak shaving, no loss of kilowatt-hour sales and the New England ISO is issuing credits for both capacity and transmission, which everybody all over, all the rate payers, they're going to benefit from that as it was discussed. And the cost, how much would it cost? It's going to cost approximately $1 million installed per megawatt. And these, we've got two models, we're working on actually two models for RMLD. One is customer-owned, which means the customer, they're going to be paying for the installation and the benefit for us would be that we get 50% of the credit and customer gets another 50% credit for the capacity and transmission. We did analysis for one of these units were approximately for four megawatts over the period of 10 years, we can save approximately $5 million, $5 million, $5.7 million or $570,000 a year savings for us if we move toward this program.
So I see the, excuse me if I may ask a question.
Sure.
The ROI is about five years or so on it. What's the equipment life?
The equipment life is generally for the hours that they're being run, it's about 10 years, 10 to 15 years. So for the first five years, you'd be paying the credit that you get, basically it's paying off for the unit. And then anything after that, it's a free, free credit that is coming to us. So if you recall, this is the new technology trend. If you recall right back 20 years ago, 30 years ago, you had these big mainframe computers that now they're replaced by iPads and, you know, the same kind of concept, these big hefty power plants, which is going to cost billions of dollars. Now they've been broken down into mini generators on site for increasing their reliability and economic cost benefits that they do have and they bring now. Now the capacity and transmission credit is going to triple in 2017. So if that, if that happens, which the New England ISO has promised or they predicting it's going to happen, these units could be paid back even less than five years, probably at faster rate, probably three and a half to four years. So this is where the technology trend is. Like what I said, we've got two templates, one for the customer pay and the other one is for RMLD. For RMLD, we're trying to do that, to install those units at the substations, which you see at the right over here. These are the generators that they go on the feeders. The limit is two and a half megawatts per feeder without getting into heavy permitting and we can use those during the peak and bring the cost savings to, to our rate payers, which is really great and it makes economic sense. Any questions?
Could you make a comment? Could you mention some of the other towns that are?
Yeah, the other towns that they're looking into, municipals are Middleborough, we just visited, they, they installing some of these units. The, I believe, Tanton, yes, Tanton de Gonne, definitely Tanton. Braintree is looking into. Braintree is looking into that. And.
West Boylston.
West Boylston.
Shrewsbury.
Yeah, Shrewsbury had them for a while, right? They've had them for a while. But the Shrewsbury units are not, these are not the new efficient generators. These are the old technology that Tom and I, we visited, we, and we looked at them. So it is, these are the micro, like micro turbines, they're, they got silencer that, you know, they're running very efficiently and low noise, like at 50 to 50 decibels, which is a little bit audible, yeah, if you stay like about 10, 15 feet away from the generator, but as you move away 10 or 15 feet, you barely can hear these units. So, with the new technology. And the good thing about that is that, you know, we can operate that from the SCADA, which is gonna be part of this slide that I'm, gonna be explaining. Yes?
So, what's your vision on this? So, it sounds like it's a easy, quick win for RMLD, but do you envision several of these over the next?
We, I envisioned like about 10 of these units, 10 two-megawatts. But because of the future, I don't know, we don't know how these, whether these credits are sustained or not, we're gonna move toward this technology, you know, cautiously. Like if we could put two megawatts per year, or, you know, and within next 10 years to ramp up to 20 megawatts. So by then, we know how the market plays, and whether it makes sense to continue, or, you know, and then we, these units are paid at a faster rate, like what I said in 2017. So we wanna use this opportunity to put these units, not to go crazy with them, but at least to start putting these units to see the economic benefits, and make sure these are paid at a, at a faster rate, and then later on, if the credit is continued. So it's benefit for everybody. If not, at least we have them, which is gonna, still we're gonna benefit from by cutting down the cost of the capacity in the area, which.
So, if I may, it, it sounds like very logical, and is it the, it sounds like logical place, is the substation where you're gonna be putting them in?
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious, but can you put them in the building next door? I mean, is there a reuse?
Well, if you choose to, yes, you can put them at the government buildings, that's one of the sites. One of the sites that we're proposing and we are, we've been studying is that old substation that was retired in Linfield. We got right across from Town Hall, there is an alley, there is the mini plaza, and on the right, we got a retired substation, we already cut the pipes, that they go out on ministry. And, you know, if we put one unit right there, it's out of sight, out of mind. It's, there is only one property, which is approximately about 100 feet away from.
There are sites available that you could place them.
Yeah, there are sites available, but there, the new substation that we're building in Wilmington, that's a proposal, that's another one that we could put even fewer of these units at the new substations, you know, three, four, five. But like what I said, we're still studying, doing the numbers, and we wanna make sure that, you know, we move toward this technology in a calculated way. So we don't wanna invest all of a sudden, you know, billion, millions of dollars over here, and then all of a sudden, we see that, you know, well, all the capacity and transmission credits are being cut away, and now the payback for these units are gonna be like seven to 10 years. So that, we don't want that to happen. So we are moving, like what I said, very cautiously, but right now, it makes economic sense, and that's where the technology is going. And even if we pay them off within five to six to seven years, it's still, it's worth having these units, because during the peak time, you fire them up, from the SCADA, push on one button, and that one, that means the cost saving in the capacity and transmission both, for everybody, all the rate payers across the board.
I mean, um.
Yes.
Have you had initial discussions at all with any of the towns of where these are gonna be sited?
We haven't, we are looking, at the substations, yes, we know pretty much, pretty much we are going to have, basically it's at our liberty, and we're getting the permit for that, obviously. At the other sites, we haven't, I probably, this is still in the design stage, an idea. I'm proposing one unit, one two-megawatt unit for FY 2016, and putting in the budget. And now we can get municipal bonds for that, that's gonna increase the plant value, and it's going to have some of the cost savings on the rates, to keep the rates, you know, at least for everybody, they, before, I wanna, I wanna get that before FY 2017, which as soon as we reach then, then I'm sure the price of these units, they're gonna go up too, because all the manufacturers, they want a portion of the pie as well.
Sure.
So this is the time to get in, and that's what we're proposing. Along those lines, if I may, continue, what it is that, you know, we are looking, this slide is showing the grid modernization in one snapshot to see.
Hamid, before you jump into this, I did have a question about those.
Sure.
These are gas generators?
These are gas-driven, there are two types. The gas and also diesel.
Okay.
Dual-fuel ones, they're more expensive than, you know, it's gonna cost you approximately, if you wanna go dual-fuel, the cost is gonna go up, it's not efficient, and now you're gonna get more into environmental.
Yeah.
Limitations and permitting, which we're trying to avoid.
Okay, couple of questions.
Sure.
Are those assumptions based on today's fossil prices, or are they based on what they were two years ago, i.e. double what they are now, and what they'll, will be in the future?
They are based on the old prices. The last price that we got was about, about six months ago, you know, and it was based on whatever the price was six months ago, and.
Of the unit?
Of the units, right.
I'm talking about the price of the fuel.
The price of the fuel, no, they, they're not based on that, I don't think it is.
You're saving, I mean, you're, the operation.
These, these units aren't gonna be run in the.
Understood.
Right.
I understand.
The fuel is a relatively small piece of the overall.
I got you, doesn't really matter that much, okay. So another technology that's getting better are batteries, lithium-ion batteries are getting, so they've been dubious for grid storage and discharge, but they're getting way better really quickly. And the DOE has huge programs, and there's all kinds of products coming out in grid batteries, which would do exactly the same thing, where you would, as you know.
Right.
You would trickle-charge them overnight when power is dirt-cheap, and bang, turn it on at 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM, discharge them, do the same thing at night. So, I would like to see a, a full analysis that, why this would be better than a lithium-ion battery, given that we'd be talking a couple, three years from now before we'd be putting one in.
Right now, to the base of, as I've done the research, it's not really, it's not cost economical, you know, there is not, the economic benefits for the batteries are not there yet, because they're not efficient, and these are not, you're gonna need huge field with huge amount of these battery cells in order to store the energy, the maintenance cost, and all said and done, it's like solar technology, which the efficiency, yeah, everybody gets excited about it, yeah, let's put the solar panels up on here, they, yeah, if they cost, right now, per kilowatt hour that you, they can deliver, the cost is astronomical.
Okay.
It's not, they pay, the return of investment on the solar energy is approximately 50 to 20 years.
Talking about batteries, though.
For batteries, it's gonna be more than 10 years. Absolutely no way that, you know, you can find a system that, I can guarantee you, that the payback, the return of investment is gonna be around five years, for any type of installation.
Well, I think the other thing we would need to consider, I mean, I'm always intrigued by the batteries as well.
Right.
It'd be great if you could do a, a test in parallel with them, if it didn't cost too much. But this is a proven technology.
Yes.
That you're talking about, it's been in the field, it's well-tested, very reliable. The battery, and, and you're right, the batteries are coming out, and I've gone through some of the presentations, those batteries, they are huge, and.
Yeah.
And you have to convert it into AC, you need all the inverters, you need all kind of kinds of issues.
Right.
Okay, so, point taken. So the other one is expansion of the sort of programs Tom is talking about.
That's right.
So you wanna knock your two megawatts off.
Right, right.
With this new fossil fuel generator that you've put somewhere.
That's right.
The same two megawatts who become from an even further expansion of the sort of thing Tom and Pauline and you all are working on.
Every bit helps.
Right, so what I'm saying is, why would we not simply further expand the peak shaving options to a deeper level, to the, you know, 500 Club and the 400 Club and the, whatever it is, go to the next level down and do the same thing? Why would we wanna add this rather than just do the, do it intelligently and knock the demand down?
But incrementally, we are moving toward this. Remember, these are all new technologies.
Right.
And we wanna be, make sure to be, take the minimum risk, but like what Mr. Stampa said, we wanna make sure we approach the proven technologies first, and then slowly migrate toward the developing technologies.
I get the high concept. What I'm saying is, I would like, as with batteries, which maybe you're right, that they're non-starters, the analysis of why.
Oh, sure, we can.
Before we get a budget that says, we're gonna spend a seven-figure sum, and go through permitting and a local siting of a fossil fuel generator in our district, that we've, we've explained how the same thing could be done.
Right.
With expansion of what Tom's talking about.
Right.
And what the relative cost benefits and complexity is of doing either one.
Oh.
Because you're about to talk about your, your smart grid, which is amazing, which is exactly what could do, you know, and that's the future right there.
Right.
Well, you know, history repeats itself.
Right.
And I remember when I first came to Redding, well, we were paying off a bond issue on an incinerator, which was the hot new environmental technology, which we never used. The town never used it, from my understanding, but yet we had this huge bond issue that we were trying to pay off through our taxes, because we didn't either have the right environmental permits, but it was hot technology at the time.
Right.
So I'm afraid, I'm a little, I love new technology, but I'm a little leery of it. Yeah, I agree, we need to go through the analysis, and I think it'd be wonderful if we could do a trial test.
Well, I thought you were gonna, about to make the opposite point, that we're, we're about to issue a bond for $2 million to put up a generator that becomes a stranded white elephant, because we turned out not to need it, thanks to efficiencies and thanks to smart grid. But it turns out, you, I thought you were helping this same point I was trying to make, but.
I'm afraid I'm a little out of the blue.
It could, it could cut both ways, though, that argument that.
It could, you're absolutely right.
Anyway, there'll be a discussion at the board level about this going forward.
By all means.
And maybe in the communities, when we start saying we're gonna put diesel generators, you know, so.
Gas-driven, these are the ones we're proposing that are gas-driven.
Okay.
So it's gotta be with the natural gases, with the low pressure.
As you guys know, in North Reading, the, you know, this pipeline issue's got everyone going kooky.
What, all the backyard thing?
Yeah, so, again, caution being is, if you're gonna, we're gonna do this, you get out early in front of the town.
Right.
And the people, because they, I mean, it's a very tough issue now in North Reading, and.
What's the issue, sorry?
The proposed pipeline.
Okay.
Hindmore and pipeline, going right through the town.
Yep.
These are not, maybe, maybe add just one point, these are, these are not any different than when you buy generator for your house as a backup. These are the same units.
Well, they're a bit bigger, but.
And a little bit, it would be a little bit bit, yeah. But the same concept, same units, that, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna consume much gas.
Right, it's only gonna.
You know, it's the low pressure and.
Limited hours.
Very efficient, limited hours, you're talking about only if, 600 hours a year, if it happens, you know, maybe less. But for that 600 hours, the benefit that you get, the economic benefit, it just justifies, you, we could do the numbers and show you that exactly how, actually, I do have, we've been interviewing few vendors that they do this technology and they sell it.
Can I add something?
And then you could see.
The organizational study, reliability study consultants are also looking at that, this in parallel. So they'll be making recommendations that are separate from, you know, we're trying to keep what we're proposing and laying out separate from what they're gonna.
Right.
But we are sending them this so that they can evaluate it and give us their opinion.
Good.
Great.
Good, good discussion.
Yeah. Great, the grid modernization, this is like a 30,000-feet, basically planned, that shows within next 10 to 15 or 20 years, this is the direction, these are all the, all the pieces, they come together. We got three areas or three technologies. This is AMI, this is the home area network, and this is the distribution automation or distributed devices. What happens over here, as Colin explained, we have a not completely fully, full AMI technology, so we, RMLD invested close to 2 and a half million dollars a few years ago into AMR technology, which is not full two-way commi, doesn't have the full two-way communication capability. And as a result, we're not gonna be able to implement some of the technology-driven devices, and they, we're not gonna be able to have two full-way communication from the office to the meter and meter back to the office. So in order to do that now, and plus, we got 65 meters, these are all club 500, the the usage is 500 kilowatt-hours, KW and more, that these units, Itron doesn't have any, any technology available for them, or any solution for them. So what we did, we, we, we just recently had a bid to employ a technology, and we were looking into a technology that could actually, we could kill two birds with one stone. We just didn't wanted that to invest on AMI that could, it could utilize our existing AMI Itron system without, you know, without spending more money and actually changing out all the meters. We wanted that to be able to be integrated into the new technology, as well as be able to do all the demand response and distributed generation and, and the distribution automation over here, which is future trend and future technology, because the reason for the distribution automation is the faster we restore the outages, the faster the meters, they're gonna be restored and the money-making for RMLD. So these three areas, we looked into and we purchased basically the Eaton technology, which is latest and newest, which is this system, this network, it's a mesh network, it's gonna be able to handle the, the metering system needs, as well as the demand response and home area network devices, which the next generation of the home appliances, they're gonna be IP-based. So you can run them right from your iPad over, and so the ZigBee technology that they used to now, it's obsolete almost. So the new generation of appliances, they're all IP-based. So this system is gonna be able to handle the IP-based technology very well. And the bandwidth is large enough that we can bring the distribution devices, the IEDs, intelligent electronic devices out in the field, back to the office over here. So these three systems, they're gonna send the data into the data collector on the poles that we're gonna have, and the data collector, there is a firewall over here, is gonna pass on to the switch that you're gonna convert the signal into fiber, and the fiber is gonna jump on the RMLD fiber loop, which we have all over, you know, the system, with 17 nodes, fiber nodes. So as soon as the radio signal is reaching one of these nodes, it's gonna jump, the data is gonna jump on this fiber loop or fiber network, and that's being brought back to the servers in the office and pass, passing through another firewall for security. So the data security is there. And then we're gonna bring all to, all these subsystems, which is outage management system, SCADA system, AMI server, demand-side management, and the COGS there. So all of these data, this system is gonna be able to feed all of these servers, so every server can get the related data, the data that needs for processing and integrating all the information together. The next slide, please. This slide shows, once the information comes to these host servers, then it's gonna be transferred into some type of, they call it service-oriented architecture or enterprise service bus, which is a data superhighway. What it does, every lane is dedicated for a certain data, that it's not gonna slow down the speed of the servers and data processing. So once that data comes in and it's gonna be classified to what goes where, then from there, it's gonna go to the customer information system, billing, integrated work order management system, and for reporting. This is the historic data. The real-time data from the SCADA and outage management system is gonna go into the real-time bus, it's a server, real-time server, that is gonna come to the SCADA for processing, for the fault detection, isolation, restoration system, which means automatically the fault is going to be isolated within a matter of seconds, rather than hours. That means the matter, the meters, they're gonna be brought back to life faster. The OMS system, outage management system, which we're gonna have the map that shows exactly where the pocket of the outages are, and the system is smart enough that can detect what could be the possible problem, where the fault is, and once the sensors, they sense the fault, they can send a message to the iPad or to the field device, the field personnel. So the, the trucks are gonna be rolled right to where the fault is, and when they get there, the fault is automatically isolated. So they can get to work, make the repairs, and then, you know, of fast restoration of So they can get to work, make the repairs, and then, you know, of fast restoration of the system. Uh, right, and having two thousand customers out, we're gonna shrink it down to maybe fifty customers to a hundred customers. So faster restoration for those. And then we've got the conservation voltage reduction, that's another technique for saving and making sure that, you know, during the peak time, so we reduce the demand of electronic devices by lowering the voltage. Now, the lowering voltage doesn't mean that electronic devices, they're gonna get damaged. What it means, once you reduce the load, the linear load that they should, voltage and the current, they chase one another, they're gonna reduce the demand without damaging the appliances. And then, you know, but the nonlinear load is still gonna have, you know, the voltage is gonna keep up with the, with the current. And then we've got the simulator. The simulator is for engineers, so they can, in the background, they can simulate the data for switching, which way to do the switching to be more efficient, productive, and less labor-intensive, which is gonna bring more savings for the, for us. Another one is the power factor corrections. Now, we're gonna have all these capacitors that right now, they're being driven, they're manually operated, which means during the peak time, which we're trying to lower the demand of the system, that's another way to save money and, you know, get less capacity transmission charges from the New England ISO. These are the field personnel, they're gonna have to go to, on the streets, and then turn the capacitors on manually. We're gonna automate those, and those, once they're automated, they can be controlled through the SCADA, and they're gonna be programmed, so as the load comes up, these capacitors, they come in at different locations, and they're gonna suppress the rising demand. And that way, you know, you're not gonna be paying through the roof during the, um, peak, a peak sign. So in a nutshell, this is where it is. The goal is for the next ten to twenty years, bring the data from the field, more intelligent data for processing more intelligently, to become efficient and more productive, and bring more cost savings for the ratepayers. And this is, in a nutshell, the plan. And these are coming in pieces, and as these pieces they put together, you know, we're gonna give you report that what piece is done until this whole picture is completed, so.
So you have rank ordered, which ones are most important?
Yes.
And which ones you're doing first, second, third, etc.
The, this year, what we did, we upgraded the SCADA system. Uh, and also we purchased the OMS system that is gonna be integrated with the CIS. The reason we did that, because I wanted to have the system before we, maybe implement the AMI system for testing, to make sure all the data from the Itron as well as I, AMI, they both could come and be hosted in the server. And the server, the integration goes seamlessly with the OMS system. So that we've, we've done, and we purchased the cybersecurity firewalls. So those are all done this year. Uh, and then as we go on for the next years, you know, we have in the budget that we spent money for the field switches, electronic devices, and we've got another map which shows the location of the switches, where is the optimal location for the switches. Engineers, they've been working on it, and we have that completed. We pass that information on to booth and associate for revisiting, making sure that, you know, well, we have adequate switch locations, get another set of eyeballs, you know, put another set of eyeballs on it, making sure we're not going overboard or we're not going under, so, you know. So this is being reviewed by them, and once they review, they give us the recommendations, then that's gonna be the basically template for us. Yes.
I do have questions.
Sure.
Well, a lot of this is technical, and I didn't understand it, and I think probably others didn't as well. I don't know, did, oh, you guys, you, oh, you, John's gonna get up and explain it now for us. But I get the high concepts. So it's, it's, it's outstanding that we're gonna have a smarter grid is the bottom line. And I think for the average person who might be watching, um, is the goal uh, that we have faster responses to outages and smarter management of incidents so that there's more reliability? Or is it mostly so that we can control demand to these earlier points we were talking about this evening?
The three things that I want to take out of this meeting. Number one, this plan, he, at the end of the day, once it's implemented, it's gonna minimize the duration and the frequency of the outages.
So that's the top goal.
That's a top goal. Rather than being out for hours, the people, you're gonna, it's gonna be restored unfaulted section. The section is not, it's not damaged. It's gonna be restored within seconds, rather than hours, which right now, that's what the case is. If the section is damaged, we're gonna have to roll the trucks, everything from the station all the way to the last point on, on the circuit, it's for the safety. It's gonna have to be inspected, switching is gonna have to be done, and then the people, it takes minimum forty-five minutes to an hour.
What, what will this cost, what you're describing here, to have it be done this way?
Well, the overall cost, because we go doing it over ten to fifteen or maybe twenty years, it varies depending on number of switches, number of, uh, technologies that you use, using. It could cost anywhere between ten to twenty million. But like Otis said, as you go, uh, and, you know, the technology evolve, one of the good things about this, that we stretching it over ten to twenty years is that, you know, well, we wanna make sure that, you know, we keep up with the technology. Technology that we employing today, this is open architecture. So it's not, nobody can call it obsolete five or ten years from now, because it's adaptable, flexible. You can match it to anything that, you know, you like.
I have a couple, just, these are just kinda quick ones.
Sure.
So to what extent right now do we have a problem with long duration and frequent and numerous outages? I thought we were pretty good, and we don't have a lot of outages.
No, we don't, but the system, remember, we got some maintenance issues that hasn't been addressed, like the substations and the switches and, you know, the out in the field. We got number of maintenance and the transformers. So because it hasn't really reached that point, it doesn't matter that, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that, you know, well, we're not gonna get there. We wanna maintain the reliability. In order to maintain the reliability, you have to keep up the maintenance as well as invest in the infrastructure.
Got it.
In order to make sure, and plus, as we go right now, when we have an outage during the storms that we don't have any control over, obviously, you're gonna see the hours of outage. That's why you're gonna see in my report in few minutes, that you see the frequency of the outages, they keep going up above national or sometimes, you know, the regional average. And, you know, the goal is to bring those down. And if I can restore the powers to the people within matter of seconds, I don't want them to be out for an hour. Doesn't matter even if there is one, you know? Every customer matters.
I thought you would be happy that we're using the fiber loop.
Yes, I, I am. And that was my next question, is are you gonna need to expand any of the fundamental infrastructure to, to do this?
Well, right now, we don't have to go overboard, and we don't have to expand it all over, because we got the infrastructure right now can respond to the needs of the system. But as we have these contracts that they're coming in with the light tower, and, you know, they're building, basically, they're building the fiber loops for us, and we choose their routes that they gotta go to the areas that, you know, we benefit the most as well as them. So once they build these and they transfer the ownership to us, we're getting the fiber for free.
Okay, so we will need to expand out our fiber network.
We're gonna do, over, over years, we're gonna expand, yes, but not immediately. Right now, we have.
In case there's any mis-, my questions are not because I have anything against any of this. It's great, it's all great stuff, it's because I'm very interested in it.
Right.
I wanna see us succeed with it, I realize how important it is, and I'm just trying to understand it better.
By all means, yeah.
And if anybody happens to be watching, that they also, and other board members too. You know, I certainly would like to see the push be more towards, the intelligence gives us the, the demand side management as a priority. I know it's everything, and it's, it's the future, and it's great. But to the earlier points, you know, that, that, that the tech push is more about demand management, or at least equally, that it's doing all those things. And you know what I'm gonna say about the fiber too, is that we, you know, we need to, we need to be looking at other ways to generate revenue for the department off of our, off of our fiber.
Well, this plan definitely is gonna make our integrated resource department more capable for implementing the demand response and all of those energy savings that. Because we're gonna be able to bring more information from the field and the customers back for processing into office, and we don't have to depend on a third party. Right now, we, we are doing the, our demand response with Tangent. We're not gonna need Tangent or InterNOC or anybody else, we don't want them in the, you know, for a long time.
Better for us to be doing it ourselves, for our customers and for the bottom line of RMLD.
We want us to have complete control over our own destiny, where we should invest.
Removing middlemen is a good goal.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have any comments, Phil? I heard you mention.
Well, the only thing that I, you mentioned there were three items, and I only heard one so far. You said there were two other items that you, that you had priorities on?
The priority is like the cutting down the duration and frequency of the outages, even though the reliability is good and, you know, but we got some maintenance to do. Uh, the other one, the other one is the rate stabilization. This is the idea that it's gonna help us to implement more demand response programs and more programs of that type in order to, uh, keep the rates low and basically stabilize them. Because the market, the way that it's going, once the, in two thousand seventeen, the capacity transmission is, you know, triple, you know, we're all gonna be paying more, whether we want it or not. Nstar and National Grid has already, have already increased their rates by thirty, thirty-seven percent.
They've already done it, yes.
They've already done that, and we've all feel the pain. So this is gonna have, uh, helped the program so we can initiate and implement more of these programs for keeping the rates on. Plus, the third one, which is the big drive on that, is efficiency and productivity. It's gonna increase the productivity and efficiency of the operation. Anytime the trucks are rolling out, that's meaning, you know, you're spending money. The ratepayers are spending money for truck rolls. And one of the DOE's, uh, goals for the smart grid or grid modernization or IntelliGrid is that, you know, well, you have less truck rolls on the streets, so you, you spend less money on the operation, cutting down the operational expenses. And this is another way that it's gonna help. I hope it is clear, do you see that?
Yeah.
It's all great.
Nice presentation.
We're very happy that this is happening in the department.
Wait.
I don't know, I'm speaker, but it's very great.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you.
This is a roadmap.
Yeah.
It's a vision, it, it has to be laid out in a schedule.
Yep.
It has to go through budget process every year. We're just trying to, you know, formulate the long-term plans.
It's long overdue.
Because we didn't really have any planning.
Nope, nope.
So.
What's happening is long overdue, and this board appreciates it, at least to the extent I speak for my colleagues.
You speak for all of us.
I use a term that we used to use a long time ago.
Yeah.
You, you have a blinking green light, so you can go forward.
We, you know, as Hamed said, we look at the risk, we look at the cost-benefit analysis, we're not gonna recommend anything without the figures coming forward. You know, sometimes I guess that's the downside of, you know, showing a peek into the future.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, 'cause the analysis isn't all done.
Understood, yeah. So I'm, I'm jumping the gun on some questions, but maybe pointlessly, but maybe.
Obviously, we're gonna have more presentations, and we're gonna get your approval and blessing to continue move for every piece, so you'll be in the loop. Thank you. Who's the next, was the next slide, this is yours, me? Oh, proactive maintenance program. This is another thing that, you know, we started at, uh, RMLD, Comprehensive Substation Maintenance Program. Uh, we developed a cyclic substation maintenance program so we can prolong the life expectancy of our assets. Uh, and we just finished, uh, substation testing, uh, for all substations, three or four. Some of those transformers or the equipment hadn't been tested for years. So we just finished it, and we found out a few problems that we're fixing, or they've been fixed, the ones that, you know, they needed immediately be fixed. Formation of tech services group, this was another great thing that, you know, happened to, uh, RMLD, because now we're training our techs so they can perform those services. We just spent approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars, hired outside consultant to do and do the testing at the substations. We, and now in the future, we're gonna be able to test all the equipment, with the exception of the one-fifteen KV breakers and one-fifteen KV infrastructures. Everything else, we're gonna be able to do it in-house, which is another accomplishment. Uh, distribution system maintenance program, we got seven programs that we initiated, and those are again, in order to keep up with the maintenance. We got transformer replacement programs, we got some transformers that are aged really old, like forty, forty-five years. Uh, and the life expectancy of the transformers is based on the IEEE Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers is approximately twenty years. So depending on the loading, so anything over twenty years, you are kind of, basically, you're on your own. Uh, the fact that some of those transformers that we've had leaking in the past, they were contributing factor to the, the age was a contributing factor to the failure. So that program, we've identified all the transformers, and now we're replacing them, you know, in a reasonable manner, because you can replace eighteen hundred transformers in, in a year and immediately. So within the next five to six years, we're gonna replace them also, to add more to the plant value.
One question, how many are that old, in that, that thirty or forty years old?
We got about eighteen hundred transformers, we got total of thirty-six hundred seventy transformers. We got about eighteen hundred of those that are, they are over twenty years old. We got about three hundred Padmont transformers, these are the ones that, you know, they got, you know, large oil. Uh, and, you know, these are the ones that, you know, they usually rust in the bottom, and then they start releasing. We, we've been paying close to two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars for oil cleanup. Anytime those, there is an oil release, the oil release is not cheap. The operation costs you anywhere between twenty to fifty thousand dollars depending on the severity of the leak and release. So we're trying to avoid that, that's the avoided cost, and that's why we're going through this program, to make sure we, we become proactive rather than reactive when something happens. We got pole testing, we got approximately sixty-four hundred poles that we own in the RMLD system in all four communities, and based on the USDA mandate, we're supposed to test ten percent of our own poles, which means six hundred forty poles. We recently completed six hundred forty poles that they were tested, and the ones that they needed to be addressed immediately, they were taken care of. And we have that process continuing, continued process to replace them all until everything that is on the list is taken care of. We have a manhole inspection program, we got some manholes in downtown areas and other areas in the system, in the U, URDs, urban rural development, like, you know, the, the, the underground infrastructures that we have in various parts of towns. Uh, and these are being inspected to make sure that our assets are, are completely in good shape. And if there are any sign of premature failure or something that happening, we wanna get to them before they actually fail. Uh, we have the tree trimming, we revamped our tree trimming program. Now we got a good program in place, we just hired a good, one of the best contractors, Mayor Tree Services. And now, uh, and, uh, we, we, we're going, we visited with all the towns, and we gave them presentation basically to every, the board members, that we'd like to cut back from five feet, we wanna increase it to seven feet, because then in some areas, we've been visiting twice in order to keep up with the maintenance so that the limbs, they're not approaching the energized wires and causing failures. So we got a good program for that. The porcelain cutout replacements, I'm gonna give a report in a little, a little while, that you're gonna see, we got almost eighty-five percent of the porcelain cutouts that they shattered anytime there is a fault, they've been replaced. We got approximately twenty percent more to go, and those are gonna be replaced for both safety and also durability of, of the system. Quarterly inspection of the thirteen-eight KV, thirty-five KV feeders, this is another thing that we wanna get to the areas that, you know, if there are, there is anything going on in the system, if there is a broken spreader or something that, you know, we, we could see that visually we could see could potentially lead to a failure, we wanna get to it before it happens. So all the circuits in the sys-, in the system, quarterly, we patrol them, just making sure that, you know, if there's any obvious areas that needs to be addressed, we address to them, being proactive again. And this is the most important part, that, you know, it was initiated this year, the infrared scan of the substations and the underground facilities in the parks. And, uh, we've captured few problems at the substations that they've been addressed, they've been fixed. And every month, our crews, they go to the substations, they do that, and we compare the temperature changes. And if we see that, you know, there is a trend and something needs to be addressed, we address it again before it contributes to the, to the failure. And then we got the buildings and ground maintenance plan that, for truck maintenance, and there is a study being done for the fleet study to see that, you know, what, what is the best way to manage our fleet, that's being done, that's in the works, that pretty soon getting, getting, gonna get started. We also are looking for improvements to the building and keep. We also are looking for improvements to the building and keeping up with the maintenance of the buildings. The HVAC system, which is pretty much obsolete, and we are replacing that, so we can, we can have a sound system. And I guess that's pretty much it for the, the next slide. Succession planning, you want me to continue, Colleen, or you want?
I can show that slide.
Yeah, the succession planning and career development plan. This is something that Colleen started when she joined RMLD, which is a great plan. Every employee in the organization now, there is a career development plan for them. We want to make sure, with all the good plans that we have in the future, our crews, our most important assets in the organizations, they have the skills necessary to carry us to the future. So everybody has a CDP, Career Development Plan, which is the list of the skills that they need to have to be prepared for the upcoming technology, and they need to meet those in order to, to make sure that, you know, they make it to the next level. So if you look at, on the SharePoint, everybody has, and everybody suppose annually, they need to go to see that, you know, what kind of skills they need to add to the set of skills that they already have, and they need to get, be trained, they request for training. And that's why you see part of the budget that being presented to you, we have a line item for the training, and we are, we are very pro-training, and that's going to actually be a cost-saving for everybody, and avoiding the unnecessary consulting fees and stuff that, you know, we don't like.
How is the, it's been received by, by the employees?
They like it pretty much, because that's, you know, that's incentive for them, and that's part of the employee retention plan, because, you know, you need to, everybody, and myself.
Right, sure.
I would love to learn, you know, if I know the organization is providing me the opportunity to learn more and to know more about technology, and more that I can be more efficient and productive to do my job, you know, that's, that's great. I'll stay in the organization as long as, you know, until I retire. So I think it's a very good plan that, and the people, they like it. Now we've started, I guess this year alone, we set up like fifteen or twenty trainings, and some of them, these trainings, we've been getting them from the manufacturers that, you know, at a very reasonable cost, that they come in and they give us the training that, you know, we need. Some of them, you know, we try to bring instructors, the best in the field, into RMLD. We use EKN, we use NEPA, and we use the experts in the field to bring them in rather than sending some people out, and, you know, costing us, you know, seven, eight thousand dollars a person to send somebody, we bring the instructor in, and that way, you know, we could train ten or fifteen people. So...
Can I add something to this? I think at the beginning, they were a little bit hesitant, because the program changed it to performance-based for step raises.
Sure.
But as Hamid said, we have to identify the skill sets for current and future. Some of the, also as Hamid said, we can look at all of the career developments and see that the same, people need the same type of training and bringing people in, as opposed to this guy flies to this place for three grand or whatever. We've been bringing it in. We found that there was a couple of areas where we were not compliant, so those have been corrected. You know, for the, like the lineman, for example, you know, it's, it's RMLD that certifies the lineman to be journeyman. It's us. We certify them. So if you don't have a career development program that makes sure that they understand and have time and grade to learn all of the aspects to become a journeyman, similar to Local 104, then we really shouldn't be in a position to be certifying them. So now we have a full certifiable program for both the lineman and the substation technicians. So I think it's a little nerve-wracking at the beginning to, you know, you're making a certain amount of money, you didn't really have to have much training, but we're doing it in such a way that is encouraging, and it's not making any of the employees feel like, you know, that they don't know something.
Right.
It's more like, you know, you're going to learn all of this, you're going to be better here, you're going to have a better skill set, and someday when you retire, you'll have more skills that you can take into your retirement. So I think from that perspective, it's been well-received. It took a while, but it's...
I would think it would be attractive for, for bringing employees in as well. I mean, it's certainly a benefit that you care enough about them to, to want to ensure their training, and that's part of a benefit package for, for new employees.
Sure, I think they'd love to know.
Well, you can use it to assess from both ways. You use it for your existing employees, but you also use the same template. If you hire someone and they fill it out, now you know where on the scale of their skill sets they are. So we've been using it in, in both directions. And as Hamid said, it's on the SharePoint, and you check things out like a library, you check them out, you put them back in. And when we get the dashboards fixed, we'll have a SharePoint that the, the board can have to, to be able to access a lot of this information.
Great.
Colleen, you mentioned earlier, I've turned to understand, so it doesn't sound like it's remedial. So on the one hand, you have training that gets managed as part of your performance management process, you need this to do your job.
Right.
If you don't address it, you'll be rated accordingly. And then this sounds more like real development, so it's, you know, it's sort of empowering the employees, say, here's some skills that you could use now on your future job, so it is a mix of that. I was just wondering...
It's a, it's a mix, because now you have, the employee is accountable. The employee is looking and saying, you know, I want to get that next step, so I want to get this training done. So it might be an in-house training, it might be a number of different things. So he works with the supervisor, I have a responsibility to make sure that they get the training, so we're all working together, because we want each of the employees to succeed, we want them to be safe, and that's, that's what the goal is.
Does it get rated in their performance reviews if they don't accomplish it, or is it not the case?
Well, they wouldn't get their next step raise. If they're in middle management without step raises, we're, we're going in the direction to create steps.
So there's no negative consequence, but it is, which I think is more in line with a career plan, so they, if they want to get ahead, this is the template, and this is how you get to that next step, by participating.
Right. In certain jobs, if you don't progress at all, you, you know, you're not able to progress.
Right.
At least not in that place.
Right. Okay, great.
Well, no, I think it's good, because, I mean, the focus really, you know, it doesn't have to be zero or one, but some programs are very much remedial and address performance gaps, and this feels a little more like real career development, preparing them for the, their future job, or job, so, which is, I think, good, so it gives, I like the feel of that.
Right. The way I say it to them, I say, when we started filling it out, I'd say, Tom, you won the lottery, so you're leaving tomorrow, so you have to put a list of all your duties that you do down, and then you're going to correlate them into what training would I need to be able to do that? And then that's done as it becomes more complex and over the years, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And that's how they, they fill it out, and then we review it, and the managers review it. So, you know, and as new technologies or new processes get added, we upgrade the career development plan.
Can you train us how to do this job, so that I can do a better job running the meetings and moving them along?
Are you suggesting...
No, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just joking. Anyway, is there anything else on the...
No, I think it's ambitious, the fact that there's a plan being implemented for each employee that's very ambitious and credible.
And the last thing...
It's fair.
Yeah, no, but I mean, this, I think in most companies, that's hard to, for people to want to tackle, but I think it's right.
Wasn't easy at the beginning, but they're all...
Oh, yeah. Right.
And the last thing is that, you know, we are looking into operational policies and procedures, and to make sure that, you know, they're reflective of the industry best practices. And those are being updated and revised as needed, so that's another way of, basically, to become more efficient and productive. And that, I guess, concludes, is it, oh, okay. So what's coming next? The organizational reliability study recommendations to develop ten-to-twenty-year-long plan, that's going to happen in March. I guess they're wrapping up the study. Study approximately is about eighty percent done, and we've been working with them closely, going back and forth, to make sure that, you know, they stay on the right track, they meet, they meet the goals of the study. And then once it's analyzed, and then once they give us the recommendations, basically, we're going to make the recommendations to the board, and everybody's going to get a chance to review what needs to be done, and then we're going to put them into five-year plan every year that we submit the budget, and then we're going to implement them until we finish all the recommended solutions or recommendations that they make. Also, we need to revise the 2008 strategic plan, as Colleen said. Usually, every three to five years, these plans, they get updated, and I think it's due for revision or to be revisited. So that's another sector that I'm sure Colleen is going to be working with the board to make sure that we get them updated.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I mean...
Yeah, I just would suggest, probably plan to do it similar to the budget process, so when we get to the point of wanting to look at the organizational study output, it might be helpful to have some advanced materials for the board to review, so coming in would ease, I think, with the presentations and...
We were hoping to have some things to hand out, but with the snowstorm, like Lidos is flying in from Texas, and they tried three weeks in a row to get here, so they're now coming March ninth, so we have a number of preliminary draft data to go over with them, and then we're in better position to maybe go over the benchmarking and current situational at that time.
I doubt it'll snow as much.
Who knows? Who knows right now?
The price of oil is going down.
Who knows? At this point in time.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's the end of, as well.
Bill, power supply report, are we there yet?
Do you folks mind if I do it from here?
I don't mind.
It sounds good.
We were going to go a little, do it a little bit different than we normally do it, and use some visual aids, and just stop me if you have any questions on sections I don't highlight. Mainly what I wanted to highlight on the metered load portion, which is the, the energy first, that first paragraph where it says, the metered load for the month was sixty-one million, five ninety-nine, one oh-two kilowatt-hours. If you look at this chart here, what this is comparing is fiscal year 2014, which is in the blue, to fiscal year 2015, which is in the red. Most of the blue months are a little bit higher. We were metering a little bit more load last year, whether that was due to efficiency measures, weather, a combination of both. It looks like not, not a lot of kilowatt-hour reduction, but there is some kilowatt-hour reduction for the majority of the months. September was pretty, pretty, pretty even for, for both years, as was October, but February, I'm pretty confident in saying is going to come in with the red number being higher than the blue number, because we've had a historically cool February. When Bob and I, Bob Fornier and I looked at the actuals today, we were almost at last year's level today with two more days to go, so we're looking like, it should be about four million kilowatt-hours over what we sold last year. So I just wanted to touch on that. Good news, we're looking right, basically right at where that big hump is in the middle there. Oh, thank you. That's what we had budgeted for, for energy purchases for the winter, and the actual fuel numbers are actually coming in a little bit lower, so on, on an energy side, that's, that's always a good thing to, to see. This slide touches basically on Table Two, if you're following on the, on the report. I just wanted to show you where the ISO interchange numbers show up on the overall portfolio, because it's basically, at any given time, that piece of the pie is what's out in the spot market. Everything else we have under contract. So that's the, the piece of the energy part of our portfolio that would be seeing the spikes if all of a sudden we had a real bad cold snap and prices went up. So basically, in the wintertime, around fifteen percent of our portfolio is, has the ability to fluctuate, the other parts are pretty much locked in.
Is that consistent year, year after year? Or is it just this year that it's fifteen percent?
That's an actual fifteen percent of what February looks, looks like for us, I'm sorry, January looks like for us for this year. But then, and typically, we try to narrow the gaps in the wintertime and in the summertime, so that we leave less open to the swings in the market, and let it get a little bit broader on the shoulder months when it doesn't matter so much. That's the, the goal.
Thank you.
This, this slide is a comparison of what we had budgeted for capacity costs, and I just, I'm highlighting again, you see this, this larger hump, which is the actual capacity costs, but the reasoning for that is, a few months ago, we had reported that we had transferred our Hydro Quebec transmission rates over to Energy New England to market for us. Well, they actually did market the product, and we just haven't seen the capacity payment for January come in yet, so that line is going to go down as soon as the, as soon as the capacity payment comes in, so that the actuals and the budgeted line will be closer together. And this, this just basically shows our transmission costs for the first six or seven months of the, of the fiscal year, and where the actuals, and compared to what we had budgeted, it's basically just lagging by a month from where we had budgeted. There's no big surprises in transmission costs.
So on the previous chart, if I may, Bill, we actually made money then by having someone else market for it?
Yeah, actually, we did.
Yeah.
It, it, for at least this year, it's going to work out in our favor. And then that's all I had for a presentation on the purchase power, unless there's any questions.
At some point, I would just love to see, like, a decadal curve of what we're selling and how it's drifted down or is flat. I guess it goes up with some new developments that get put in. I just would be curious to see a twenty-year curve at some point showing what we sell, you know, monthly, I don't know, total monthly sales by, by month for ten or twenty years.
We have been looking at that, especially the last ten to fifteen years recently, so we should have, you know, a version of that.
Just kind of curious what that looks like, and if there's any way to correct it or to plot some...
We keep, there's a, a number of variables that contribute to it, obviously, but...
Right.
Some of the major ones are weather, so we're looking into ways to kind of break it down, to separate out those different effects.
And can...
And see what's, what's the weather effect, what's the economic effect, what's the fuel charge effect.
And we're also going to drill down into customer class.
Right.
Because...
Sure.
That, that, that blocks, says, okay, there's less kilo, kilowatt-hour sales, but is that in the commercial sector?
Sure.
Is it the residential? Is it spread out across all of the classes? We don't know.
But just, even just a simple curve of, I, that's all great, but I would just love to see, what, what have we sold over the last ten, fifteen years? Just the, just the number, the bottom line for the month.
Yeah, that's where we started with. This is the bottom line trend.
So...
The, the charts are great, by the way.
Yeah, they are.
So much more out of the chart than...
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be doing more of that.
Yeah, thank you.
I think, I think it makes a much better presentation, much perkier presentation.
It does. Good word there, Phil.
Yes, sir.
We want more perky presentations.
Oh, that is a good question. Well, somebody asked me for chats, so there you go. What's your...
Now, Hamid has already given us some perkiness, but maybe there's more coming. Were you done, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Is it Mike there?
Do you have to, you, Bob wants to go.
Bob.
Hamid's next, but...
Yeah, we're going to go with Bob.
Either way, whatever.
Yeah, it is. Hi, Bob.
He's having the January financials tonight.
We're presenting the January financials tonight.
It's page fifty-three.
For the month of January, we had a net loss, a negative change in net assets of about two hundred thousand dollars, which decreased our net income to about two point eight million. At the same time, we had year-to-date budget net income of a little over two million, which resulted in net income over budget by about seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, a thirty-six point percent. And the reason why we came in over budget, uh, the, per the budget, the, uh, fuel was about two million dol- ex- fuel expenses about two million dollars higher than the fuel revenue. But as we all know, at the end of the year, that's a pass-through, but it's just the timing of that particular month. So, uh, the numbers look a li- a little better, uh, through the first seven. The actual year-to-date fuel revenues, however, did exceed the fuel expenses by nine hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. The revenues, the year-to-date base revenues are under budget by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, about one point seven percent. The actual base revenues came in at twelve point nine compared to the budget amount of thirteen point one. I get to use my fresh chart here now, too. Basically, what we have up here is, uh, we're showing the budget, which is in the blue. The re-forecast numbers show seven months actuals and then five months what we're projecting out, uh, the rest of the year to look like. And as you can see, we're not gonna hit our budget numbers, but we're gonna come pretty doggone close. And one of the things Colin has implemented, uh, last several months is we have these monthly meetings where we go over the numbers. And it looks like as we project out, uh, for the rest of this fiscal year, uh, we won't hit our budget number right now as it stands. There's a lot of different factors that can go into that, but we'll still be making over six percent of our possible eight percent. But as we look right now, usually we are at, uh, the seven-month, uh, level.
Great.
On the expenses, uh, page twelve A on the financial report, uh, year-to-date purchase power base expenses over budget by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars are about one and a half percent. The actual purchase power base cost came in at seventeen point one million, uh, versus the budgeted cost of about sixteen point nine. On the operating and maintenance side combined, they're over budget by five thousand dollars or less than a tenth of a percent. Uh, the actual and budget O and M expenses came in at eight point three million. Now, my second and last chart, uh, as you can see, the budget is in the blue. And projecting out the rest of this year, too, it looks like we're gonna come pretty close to hitting our, our, uh, operating, our O and M expenses. Even though the chart doesn't show that, we had a big, uh, uh, decrease in actual expenses compared to the budget. So that big discrepancy in the month of July, even though we exceeded the budget in the succeeding months, when you flatten it out and you go through the whole twelve, uh, the twelve months fiscal year, we're actually gonna come out pretty doggone close to what we had budgeted. There's still a factor for that, but as it stands right now, uh, that's how that's gonna look.
So if you did something like a three-month rolling average, it would actually smooth out a lot of those-
Right.
Those peaks and whatnot.
But we actually just picked up the budgeted numbers going forward because we've actually been pretty doggone close. But July was, uh, an anomaly, some months can sometimes be a little weird like that. But the savings we got there, uh, compensated for the over-budget, um, in the succeeding months. But overall, the twelve months, we should be in good shape.
That's good.
On page nine, the cash position, operating fund is eleven point five million dollars. The capital fund balance is at five point eight million. Our rate stabilization, six point seven million. Deferred fuel, a little over five million. And the energy conservation fund is at five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. On the general information side, the year-to-date kilowatt sales, which are found on page five, came in at four hundred fourteen million, which is about three point two seven million, uh, or about, uh, one percent behind last year's actual figures. So we are closing that gap. You can attribute that to the cold weather. Good for us, but bad for, you know, bad for us, the consumer, too. But, uh, we are closing that gap a little bit. Uh, on the budget variance side, cumulatively, the five division, five divisions came under budget by about twenty thousand dollars or about two tenths of one percent. So we're in the, uh, we're in the middle of the, uh, budget season, so we're, we're, uh, getting the capital and the operating budgets pulled together. They're due the end of next month.
Again, the charts are great.
Yeah.
And really, really give life to this, it's really impressive.
More perkiness.
More perkiness, yeah.
The next report is, uh, the engineering and operations monthly report. Uh, the first two pages, you see the financials for capital improvements, which in month of January, spent hundred one thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars, which brings the total year to date for one million, uh, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. And then the maintenance programs that I explained in the, uh, slides and the presentations, uh, these are basically the activities for the, uh, through the month of the, to, for the January and also part of it through the month of December, actually. Because the January was a slow month in some of the areas, we couldn't really do much of the maintenance, such as the transformer. So the age overloaded transformer replacement through December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. For, uh, padmore transformers and the single-phase and three-phase categories, you see that, you know, we's, uh, we replace approximately eleven point thirty-six percent for single-phase, six point forty-one percent for three-phase. Uh, overhead transformer replacement, the single-phase, eight point six-two percent, and the three-phase, three point three, thirty-three percent replaced. The pole testing, this year we tested six hundred forty-five poles and ten percent of the system. And then different coloring system for identification purposes, we used. Three hundred ninety, they got to receive silver tag, which basically they passed the test. Two hundred thirty-three, they failed the test, which twenty-one of them has been replaced. The rest are being reevaluated again, uh, because some test data were marginal, so we're gonna reevaluate them. Twenty-two double, uh, the, the, two, two, twenty-two, they received double red tag, which they were tagged as condemned and they're all been replaced. These are the public safety issues. Total of seventeen, the forty-three transfer has, has been completed by, uh, February twentieth, two thousand fifteen. Under the, the quarterly inspection, uh, you see the list of the circuits that been inspected and we haven't find, uh, much of the problems. In some areas, we saw some vines that were found that they were, uh, climbing the poles and they, they, they were trying to reach the cutouts and they were, they're removed from, uh, from the base of the pole. The manhole inspection is, we're spending, obviously, during the, uh, winter months. It's been really har- hard to reach the manholes out in the streets and on the sidewalks. So this is on hold until we get better weather conditions. Porcelain cutout replacements, approximately eighty-eight percent completed. We've got three hundred fourteen remain to go to finish the program. Under the substation maintenance, the infrared scanning for, that which is being done monthly, we haven't found any new issues. We, few were found in earlier months, which we took, took care of that. Uh, under the substation maintenance program, we still got two breakers that need to be tested as well as the, the bushing of the thirty-five KV transformer at the station four that needs to be replaced. During the testing, we found those that to be, uh, to be marginally ready to be failed. But, uh, it's holding, so, uh, we ordered the new parts and these, they're being replaced in April. So the next, uh, part of the report is the system reliability. See, we're using these indices for the benefit of David, uh, our new commissioner, and also Mark. It's a system average interruption duration, the, the two indices basically we use to, uh, identify how well the system, uh, is doing. Well, two are duration-related and one is frequency-related. The duration ones, they are system average interruption duration and customer average interruption duration index. And the frequency-related, the system average interruption frequency index. As you could see, they're all, we compare them against their national and their regional average and they're all, were pretty much for the customer average interruption durations, uh, system average interruption duration were well below their national and regional average, which means we are doing well compared to other systems in, uh, duration of the outages. The system average interruption frequency index for two thousand fourteen, you could see that there is a spike. There we got to go a little bit above their regional average because we've had too many pole hits, uh, that, you know, the, 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 in various communities. But for the month of January, as you could see, pretty much in, uh, across the board, we are doing very well. We haven't had any, uh, pole hit, obviously, the snowbanks, they've been helping, you know, they're protecting.
Literally.
They're helping something, right.
The only positive benefit.
So that's why my number for system average interruption frequency is zero. And system average interruption frequency and the ca- customer average interruption, basically, we haven't had much, much of the outages to report, so that's why we don't like, but those numbers, they go up as we, you know, every month, as we're getting closer to the spring and summer and... The next page, you see the reliability report for the cause of the outages. Basically, we had, uh, total of four outage-related, uh, that the, the fifty percent were equipment-related, fifty percent the tree-related. And the chart and button, bottom shows the average of the last five years, five to six years, where has been the major problem with the, the contributing factors to the outages, which twenty-eight percent trees, wildlife been for twenty-four percent, and equipment approximately thirty-six percent. And these are the equipment that the transformers, they could, uh, either failed or, uh, you, or the maybe cutouts that the porcelain cutouts that we addressing those. So all of those maintenance-related issue should cut down these, the numbers for the equipment, for the trees. And hopefully, uh, once we, we, we implement, uh, these, these are in full, these are, the, we, we get making more progress with the maintenance, you're gonna see these numbers shrinking.
I'm surprised about the wildlife number, what, what is that?
These are the squirrels and, you know, the animal contact that, you know, well, we have them, uh, during the, uh, spring, fall, and summer. You know, we've had lots of squirrel contacts, believe it or not. We got animal lifeguards for the, for the devices that we put them on. But, um, somehow they managed to, you know, to chew them, get into them.
Really?
Wow.
Yeah.
They have their own training.
Yeah.
Colin's been providing training for the squirrels.
Need to reprimand them, but, um, for-
Oh, I have an underground pool and anyone that's a pool, uh-
You have an underground pool?
Oh, in ground. In ground, in ground.
Tell we're running late. The animals, uh, over time, won't chew, right, the, uh, PVC piping, whatever you have there, so, let's just put in, uh, metal piping.
Apparently, it happens in, uh, like the international and the oceans as well. That cable has to be protected against, uh, like sharks and other animals. You're only nine, nine on the cable.
Wow.
I mean, it's just, I don't know what drives them to do that, but, mm.
Any questions?
Nope.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hameed.
Thank you.
Is that the last agenda item?
Yeah, I guess we're all set, we don't need to go discuss either.
We have a couple of, um, like, uh, board review dates for, um, the budget. I did email, um, CAB chairman, George Hooper, and asked him if we could combine, he prefers not. So, um, attempt to, uh, limit the amount of meetings, but, so we need, um, budget meetings and then, um, asking for a policy review committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I wanted to notify you that both Hameed and I would not be at the March twenty-sixth, um, both on vacation.
Should we reschedule, let's reschedule the meeting then, shouldn't we?
I don't mind, but I know he wants to stick with the last, so he's like-
Well, I know, but if, if the general manager isn't gonna be here, it's, it makes it a little tougher.
Well, Jane, Jane will be acting general manager, we still have, um-
Okay.
Yeah.
We can actually have Peter Price give the operations-
Fine.
Right, let's do that, let's do that. I think, I think that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we want, we're gonna get the budget done before we go on vacation, so that's, uh-
Right, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, then. So we're all set, we have the, next meeting is Thursday, March twenty-sixth and, uh, Thursday, April thirtieth, and CAB meetings Wednesday, March eleventh.
How soon are you gonna need the budget, the, uh, policy-
The policy committee meeting, should we, uh, coordinate that? Phil, I think you and I are on that.
Right.
Board, right, so should we coordinate that with Eugenie in terms of finding the time?
I think the three.
I think, yeah, I think Tom is on it.
Three, okay, sorry, Tom.
Yep.
And how soon are you gonna need that? My time is kinda limited these days.
What's more important, Joe?
Well, we- You wanna do it by conference, can you conference in on it, the discussion?
If we do it in, you know, I, I, if we can do it in the morning like we did before. Yeah. I think that's fine, that's fine.
Do, do, yeah.
You know, I can roll out of bed and get here, I live so close.
I think what you were saying is there's three meetings that need to be scheduled. Two budget meetings and a- So what, what's the best process, Gene, if we gave you some dates, uh?
I, I, I can't give you more, um, Tuesday because of the bulletin required this next week, so it has to be, I'm looking for March there.
What's most, the most, what's the more urgent, the policy meeting or the budget meeting?
Yeah, the policy.
So, uh, Phil, why don't you tell us which morning it works best for you? And then Tom and I can, um-
Really, the, I don't think I've got anything on, the fifth, I don't think I've anything scheduled on the fifth. Let me check here.
Do we need about an hour?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the budget meetings are in April.
Yeah, right now, I've got nothing scheduled on the, on the fifth of March. Nothing on that, on that day.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's not a several-hour meeting, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Well, what ti- well, at what time we, we meet early, I have a, I do have an eight-thirty meeting in Wilburn.
Ooh. We gotta need an hour, so we meet at seven-thirty? You do seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty's okay with me.
Yeah.
Seven-thirty's fine with me.
On the fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't need to be at that one, right?
You, you're always welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Or you make it six-thirty.
Wait, let's not go too far.
It's okay.
What's the, what, what do they have to happen?
Yeah, I'll do it that way, it's fine, okay. So we're set?
Good.
All right, can we adjourn to go into executive session?
All right.
Ready for that?
Yep.
Okay.
Move the board going into executive session to approve the executive session meeting minutes of October second, two thousand fourteen and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second, again.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's-
Pull the board.
Pull the board?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Mr. Snapback, aye.
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Tom Overock, aye.
Mr. Mr. Overock.
Guess that's it, sorry for the length of the meeting, everybody.